It does not appear that we have any public participants. So moving on to continuous improvement, we will talk about the teacher incentive allotment.
All right, some good news to work on. Did have a conversation this, earlier this week via text with Commissioner of Education. Just talking about some, you know, the next 18 to 24 months of public school finance in Texas. Because I think everybody's pretty aware of what a barrel of oil costs these days along with our strategy to nationally, and this has trickled down to the state and even the local entities as far as how we're going to treat this challenge of the COVID. And we understand what the economic impacts are going to be long-term. But in saying that, I asked him, you know, what should we be thinking about, especially if we were looking to apply for the teacher incentive allotment, the TIA, which the board, I've alerted y'all about that performance pay that was a provision out of House Bill III this last time. So what we have with us today is Dee Carney, she's up there on the screen, I guess she's on your screens. Well Dee, are you frozen? Can you wave at us? She doesn't have what? She has no sound? Okay. Hey Dee.
Hello, Dr. Crawford.
Hey, how are you?
This is Dee. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Dee is one of our consultants with Hillco Partners. She used to work with Mo Casey. She's actually presented to our principals along with, I'm not sure if you've been to the board or not, when Dr. Coe was come up here before, after legislative sessions, I believe so. We've hired Dee because she is an expert at a lot of things dealing with the agents, TEA. She's done a lot of research for us on this. She's kind of held our hand as we've gone through the teacher incentive allotment process, which has included upwards of 50 of our staff persons here in Tyler ISD. We recently put out a survey. So we're going to let her do the best that she possibly can through this presentation. We also have our Chief of Staff and our Executive Director of Human Resources, Ron Jones, Chief of Staff, and Laura Kano, y'all know they're staying about four and a half, five, and now six feet apart back there, that are going to also be able to provide some commentary as we provide this presentation, which is something y'all have asked for. And I think it's a good practice as we consider continuing on and applying for the teacher incentive allotment. Dee, I'm going to let you go ahead and take over.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Thank you, Board members, for inviting me to present a summary, if you will, of the teacher incentive allotment. Then Ms. Kano and Ms. Jones certainly can fill in the local detail. Joe, I'm having a lot of feedback from the room. I don't know if that's on my end or your end. So let's get started with the, I'm sharing the slides. There we go. We're just going to get started with the why, the what, the how, and when of the teacher incentive allotment. And you got to go back to the, before the '86 legislative session, when the Texas Commission on Public School Finance, they met for a year. One of their highlighted pieces of the commission was to discuss recruitment, retention, and equity in, with educators. And this is, in particular, a statement from the TEA's website. And you'll notice all these slides have TEA on them because they're TEA's slides. But the teacher incentive allotment is in response to the Texas Commission on Public School Finance about recruitment, retention, and equity of highly effective educators. And under the recruitment challenges, the TEA has presented this data that, based on their information, about 4% of high school students indicate they're interested in an education major. And then more concerningly is less than half of the parents want their children to become teachers. And then the agency also looked, again, the data's a little lagging from 2017-18, but when you look at the retention challenges, it's quite significant that we, in Texas, we lose our teachers in that five-year period and continue to lose them after that. This was a new slide that the agency began showing as they rolled out the teacher incentive allotment, is to show that economically disadvantaged students are more likely to be taught by inexperienced teachers. And that's what this blue bar is. The blue bar are interim and probationary teachers. The orange bar are standard or novice teachers, they have three years or fewer experience. And then the gray bar shows you four years or more experience for the teacher certification. And as the percentages of economically disadvantaged students increase, you can see that the experienced teachers decrease. And so House Bill III, which you're very familiar with that, passed by the '86 legislative session, established this optional teacher incentive allotment with the stated goal, right, of a six-figure salary for teachers who prioritize teaching in high needs areas and rural district campuses. Now that link there is a webpage on TEA's website that has all the information you could ever want right now about the teacher incentive allotment. It has short video clips, it has all the documents that we've included in your live binder, it's just a resource page, and they continue to update that often. So what is the teacher incentive allotment? Well, there's some key points here. We will dive down a little bit more into each of these points. But it's, at a high level, districts can choose if they want to develop a local designation system of high-performing teachers, and those designations are master exemplary or recognized. Districts will receive additional funding, we'll talk a little bit more about that, for every designated teacher they employ. The districts will receive greater funding for the designated teachers who work on rural and/or high needs campuses. Just so you'll know, TEA defines Tyler ISD as a non-rural district, so you have non-rural campuses. But still, there's additional educator, additional funding. 90%, or at least 90%, of the teacher incentive allotment funds must be used for teacher compensation on the campus where the designated teacher works. It does allow 10% of those TIA funds the district can hold back for implementation of the TIA. And then another key point is, is TEA is working in partnership with Texas Tech University on the approval of the local designation system. So let me just show you a little bit more about those key points. So that first key point, teacher designations of master exemplary and recognized, there are performance standards. The agency released those performance standards last week, call them cut scores, if you will. And they're based on these two required pieces, teacher observation and student performance. This is just a little bit more detail about the teacher observation and the student performance pieces that are included in a district designation system. So under teacher observations, Tyler uses the T-test system. So for Tyler's local designation system, T-test would be used for observations. Student growth, the growth measures are determined by the district. You heard Dr. Crawford a moment ago, reference a survey, we'll talk a little bit more about that, because that is one of the questions we ask the teacher incentive allotment committee, is about student growth metrics. It's very important to the agency, as you can imagine and understand why, that districts show their growth measures are valid and reliable. There is some optional factors. The agency does allow your, the district designation system to have optional factors, such as mentoring other teachers. I know when we were at Region Seven last month, teacher attendance played a huge part in that conversation, but it could include a family survey, student surveys, so you can have optional factors in your system. And another decision the district makes is how to weight each of those components. This is strictly an example that the agency has in their presentation from Region Seven to show you different ways you can weight those components for a variety of things, for the funding, for the spending funding, how you determine master, recognized, exemplary. So you can see on the pie chart on the right, it includes STAR-tested teachers, teacher observation, a value-added measure, student learning objectives, and a student survey. And then on the pie chart, excuse me, that was on the left, on the pie chart on the right, you have elementary ELAR and math teachers that may not have a student growth or STAR measure with those. And you can see teacher observation, student survey, and student learning objectives. Those are just examples of how, of decisions districts need to make around this particular, this particular component. The second component is funding by designation. One of those key features is that districts receive additional funding for every designated teacher they employ. And here's how that funding works, right there. A designation, master exemplary, recognized, the school's socioeconomic need, and this is where your CFO comes into play, with tiers of socioeconomic need, and then whether the school is rural or non-rural. And here's the chart that the agency has published from the beginning of the teacher incentive allotment. Again, the key piece here is that districts receive greater funding for designated teachers who work at rural or even non-rural and high needs campuses. So you'll notice the arrow on the top shows you more need, and that's going across those tiers, and that's socioeconomic need tiers. And then the arrow at the bottom shows more funding. So let's look at a recognized teacher. That base incentive allotment funding is $3,000. That multiplier is applied for each tier. As the percentages of low socioeconomic students increase, that increases the tiers for that campus, and that increases the allotment funding for non-rural campuses. So at a, at a campus that is a non, they don't have any economically disadvantaged students, that particular recognized teacher would bring $3,000 into the district funding. If that same teacher chooses to work or is, or is assigned to work at a Tier V campus, meaning they have quite a few low socioeconomic students, that same teacher would bring $9,000 into the district. And so that little box on the side there that says max funding amount to the district equals $32,000. The agency left off, in my opinion, they left off an important piece, it's $32,000 per teacher, per teacher. There are some important considerations. We discussed these at Region Seven, as well as in some of the agency's slide deck. A reminder that the districts must use at least 90% of those fundings, TIA funds, at the campus where the designated teacher works. That does not mean that teacher earns 90% of those funds, but the funds are directed to that campus. If a teacher moves to a new district, the money will follow the teacher to the new Of course, you have to develop a local plan on how to use the funds, and an attestation statement has to be filled out as well.
Dee, just a second.
So the how and the when, when does all this take place?
Dee, just a second.
Okay.
I don't want to stunt your momentum here, but I had some eyes shoot over at us about the teacher pay being transferable to another school system. Just confirming that I'm correct when I say that it's, the districts just serve as a pass-through from the state. In other words, if the teacher leaves, it's not a pool of money that Tyler ISD gets that we now have to send over with that teacher. That teacher is identified from the school system that they're at as a recognized or master teacher. And if they were to leave to go to District B, then TEA just funnels that money that, to follow the teacher through District B, not through us. We don't lose funding because of that.
You are correct, sir.
Thank you.
That is right. In fact, if a teacher, oh, we're writing and just, if a teacher has a designation, say they're a master teacher, and they move into a district that does not have a designation system, that money still follows that teacher to that campus, even if the district does not have a designation system. The label, if you will, the teacher designation stays with that teacher for five years. Thank you for that question. So on the how and the when, the district's role is to develop and implement a designation system. And that is something that Mr. Jones and Ms. Kano started, and Dr. Crawford started as soon as, it's my understanding, as soon as House Bill III rolled out and introduced this, they began exploring that. I joined to facilitate the conversations in January. The state's role is to approve these systems. Again, there's that validity and reliability word. The agency will continue to stress validity and reliability. The timeline, Tyler has selected to apply for Cohort C. There is, just so you'll know, a Cohort A and a Cohort B. Some of your colleagues are applying for a Cohort A and B, but those districts already had their local funding, teacher allotment system in place, such as Longview, Dallas, some of the other larger districts across the state have something similar. So they're moving into Cohort A and B. Tyler selected Cohort C. Ms. Kano has already submitted the letter of intent on January 24th. Our next deadline is to submit the system submission to TEA for review. You can see that's coming up on May 15th. The data is submitted to Texas Tech not for a while, it'll be in November 2021. And then the agency will approve or disapprove, if you will, February 2022. Funding is dependent upon two, a two-step approval process. TEA must review the application. They posted the application last week, and then, that's due on May 15th, and then the data review goes to Texas Tech in November of 2021. The system review that's due on May 15th includes these particular components. We have to describe the teacher observation piece, the student growth measures, the local designation plan, the district's communication plan, the district's spending plan, and then long-term supports to continue the plan. And then in 2021, when the data is submitted to Texas Tech, these are the pieces that have to go to Texas Tech, will be the teacher observation piece and the student growth A key, critical component to all of this is stakeholder engagement. Throughout any of these system components in the application, the district must explain how stakeholders have been engaged. In Tyler, our, the TIA committee includes all your campus teacher of the year, years, and principals, assistant principals, and then central office staff as well. It can include focus groups, surveys, interviews. Our first meeting was on February 26th. We just completed an interview last, a survey last week. And each of those is to identify the highly effective teachers and develop a spending plan to compensate those teachers. In just a moment, we'll look in the live binder, but just to, just to give you an idea, one of the survey questions that we had was about student growth. And we asked the 53 committee members to complete the survey, and you'll see that 43 members did complete our four-question survey. And you can see that most everyone selected T-test as the growth measure, STAR using it as a growth measure, a few more selected Telpos growth, and that would be available for your ELL teachers, NWEA map, Circle for your pre-K teachers, and then a couple of other responses we, we got back, just open-ended responses as well. So Dr. Crawford, would you like me to go on to the live binder? Do we want to stop for a minute for questions? How would you like to proceed? It's hard for me to see where you guys are right, right now with what you want to do.
I'll take advice from the trustees. Do you have any questions to this point before we continue to roll on through some of the data that we've gotten through the live binder, or the survey data, about what our committee would like to recommend?
Just wanted to ask a question, make sure I'm following. So we apply, this may, we collect data on student and teacher performance for the next school year. And in that period, we would make designation of teachers, and say, yeah, this may be for these categories. And then remember, the agency would give us 2021, they give us the approval, and then pay would start for those teachers fall in the school year.
Spring of '22 or November of '22, I don't, or the fall of '22, I'm not sure why. Dee, you may want to help answer that question of why the, there's an asterisk there on the state funding beginning to flow the district 20, well, there's an asterisk there.
Yeah, because you could choose to delay the funding if you wanted to the start of the following school year. So you have a choice. And they haven't released exactly the dates two years out when all that can happen, but that asterisk refers to, if your system is approved, you could choose to delay the start of the funding and the start of the designations to the fall of the following school year.
Yeah, Reverend Hager, the, the issue with a Cohort C submission versus an A and maybe a B, I'm, I can't remember Dee, I do know an A, Cohort A, those are the ones that already had something existing in place, they were exempted from some of the requirements of this because they were already in place. So like, with the part on here that talks about the data submission to Texas Tech for review, I don't believe that those Cohort A districts are having to go through that. You may have to refresh my memory on that, Dee, but I know that that's one thing that's caused this to be, because I know you want to get to the payout, I mean, the opportunity quicker than, than we, we all want that. But there's that thing where we've got to throw this to Texas Tech. Why Texas Tech was chosen for this, no one knows. It also costs a little bit of money to go to, to send to Texas Tech for that submission review. Remember, the validity and reliability is a big thing. It's something they've learned from Dallas, who's kind of been the vanguard on this new era of student outcomes as far as performance goes. I think there's always been some, some type of incentivization going on, but this has been a really scientific, methodical process in Dallas, it's been effective. Also, you also know the commissioner served on the school board there when they began constructing all of this. So I, them making sure that the statistics are reliable and valid, I think is a, is a, certainly a, an admirable effort, so that might protect us in the future when we start going to some of this, as far as the, the allocation of those funds to teachers, that this is backed by, you know, within .0001 of validity and reliability. So that's what's caused a lot of this, is that we're not even allowed to send our stuff to Tech until November of '21, if you're part of Cohort C. Dee, you want to answer that about the difference in the cohort requirements?
Would you mind saying that again, Dr. Crawford?
Yeah, can you, can you kind of, from your point of view, and I know that you and I pretty much got exposed to the same information at the same time, but as far as the, the difference in the cohorts, Cohort A versus B versus C, am I correct in saying that Cohort A, those that have kind of vanguarded this, are kind of exempt from some of the processes because they've already gone through some of the validation and reliability exercises? Or they're just kind of skipping those?
You are correct, sir. Cohort A and B, you already had, basically had to have your system built, and it was something you were running locally already, using your own dollars. Cohort C is the first opportunity for districts who don't already have a system to join. There is a Cohort D, and what we learned when we went to Region Seven, the Service Center at Region Seven, is they're planning on Cohort E, F, and G.
Dr. Crawford, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
From having worked in the district and now having served on the board, I would be concerned about equity as far as, do you have a representation for all of the ethnic groups who work in our school district on this committee?
Yes.
Campus level?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Campus and central office level.
All right.
Absolutely.
All right.
Spread out from all of our different campuses as well. As stated, every teacher of the year from our school system, whether it be from, you know, Orr all the way down to Owens, and I have made that mistake one day on my calendar, thinking I need to be at Owens instead of Orr. That's a long way. When I first got here, I don't have that problem anymore. But yes, ma'am, we do have that. We have the east side covered, the west side covered, ethnicities are covered as well in the design of this as far as committee representation goes.
All right, thank you.
Teacher organization reps are there too. Like?
And, and Dr. Crawford?
AFT, ATPE, NA, NEA, NCAA, yeah.
Any citizens other than those groups?
Your citizen member is Mr. Wassman here, who's elected official. Yes, he is on the school board, but they are elected by the citizens. So yes, that has been the membership of that.
So any complaints we got, we should just follow.
Yeah.
Wait, is that a word? Absolutely. One other question. So if we're looking at paying teachers in 2022, we'll have another legislative session before then, is this money that is going to be, like, saved and available, or do we know that question answered?
Well, in my introductory remarks of my conversation with the commissioner, without causing a panic out there in the public about school finance and what that's going to look like as far as the legislative session goes, if you heard former Governor Perry yesterday morning, which I'll share with y'all later, yeah, that's a concern. But this is a, the economic thing that we're in right now, let's remember that, that these things ebb and flow. I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert, y'all aren't experts on the economy, but we got to have the American spirit, thinking that our economy is going to recover and come back sometime. Sooner rather than later, we all hope. That is going to be something that impacts us. There's no doubt about that as far as future budgets go. Commissioner stated they're protecting this, this initiative, that this is a long-term initiative to get quality teachers into the profession where they can make a good salary and stay in the classroom at the same time. So it's a good question, and that's one reason, as we were designing this agenda today in this presentation, was are we even going to be able to, is this going to be something that's even going to be afforded in the 87th legislature? And for right now, TEA is saying that this is something that they value. And for right now, TEA is saying that this is something that they value and they protect and they want to gain momentum so this sustains economic hardships for, for traditional foundation funding.
Dr. Crawford, do we have anything in place for retention of our teachers versus them going to a rural school district where seemingly they get paid more? Which I don't understand, but...
Well, you got to think about how the system is already structured anyways, how cost of living, and that's, that's cost of education, cost of living, how it's built into the formula. If you work in Tyler, you already have an opportunity, because of our property values and the way the state creates the formulas, to, to have an opportunity to, to make more money here because we are a mid-urban, centralized city designation within funding formulas, as opposed to a, maybe a Class A school system that doesn't have the property values and the same funding formula. So automatically, when you start talking about where we are in comparison to the state average, or the state minimum, the required minimum, we're above that, whereas a lot of rural school systems have to live on that state salary schedule. We don't.
Okay.
So we are advantageous in being able to do that. This does balance out some.
Some.
But you have to be designated as an effective teacher to be a master teacher. It's not going to be widespread initially. This is, like the commissioner has stated, this is a 20 to 25-year momentum builder that, that we want to start pumping better teachers into the system, and you've got to perform. We're not just going to be handing these dollars out, whether you're in a mid-urban and urban school system or a rural school system. It is going to be attainable, but at the same time, there's going to have to be some, some, some performance tied to it. So I would not worry about that. The other thing is, you also, and, and some of us have worked and lived in rural communities, you have to want to live in those rural communities a lot of times. You're not going to be able to live in a Tyler and drive an hour and a half to work every day. It's just not, you know, desirable for a lot of folks. Some, some folks it is desirable, but at the same time, that, that is something I think you got to factor in here as well. They are trying to target our rural schools because they need effective instruction just as much as our urbans do, and that might be a consequence we have to live at, live with. But I'll say this, I think this board has shown creativity, this administration has shown creativity, that whatever system that we do have, there may be some other local funds that you can attach to, to keep some of your high-achieving teachers as well. So I, I think that there, this is a good base for a teacher to, to make $25,000 to $35,000 more per year, once they get that designation as a, as an exemplary teacher. But at the same time, local school systems also have that authority, that discretion. If you have that problem that you just described, we can figure out a way to, to, to approach that and attack it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dee before she rolls into this next portion? Okay, Dee, you're up.
Thank you, sir. And I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't see in the camera who asked the question about the committee members, but on that very last slide, there was a link. If you're interested, we have created just an electronic notebook, if you will, it's called a Live Binder, and you need that access key that's given on that slide. But when you get into that Live Binder, you'll notice the first blue tab here says committee members, and you can look and see district leadership members, President Wash, Washman is on our, is on the committee. We've got principals, assistant principals, we've got teachers of the year from the elementary campuses and the secondary campuses. So you can see all 52 members on the committee as well. Just, just so you'll see what all is here in that Live Binder for you, TEA's communication, and then you can select which one, which letter you might be interested in. Here's their most recent communication from March 27th about the performance standards.
Hey, Dee?
Yes, sir?
Can you share those three? We still see Live Binder. We don't even see that.
Yes, sir, that's, that's where I am, the Live Binder.
But all we see is the lady.
Yeah, have you, yeah, have you moved on to anything inside the Live Binder?
Okay, let, let me get, how about that?
There we go.
Let me go back to, thank you so much. Let me go back to committee members so you can see that again. Does that look better?
Yeah, Dee, just real quick, board, I'm sending you the, forwarding you the link to that if you want to get inside of that and look at that, Reverend Mason.
Yep.
I'm sending you an email link on that.
And it's also on, it's also on your slide, presentation. Okay, let me go back then. There's the TEA communication, the most recent letter from TEA. If you are interested in doing a really deep dive, here are all the presentations, the, the slide decks the agency has released publicly. The FAQ, they updated that just last week. Lots of really good questions that have been submitted by districts, and these, these are the agency's answers. Any document you want to see is here under the TIA webpage documents, the Cohort C readiness checklist. Here are those performance standards that were released last week by the agency for the observation. Here's the student growth standards, and I call these cut scores, if you will. And then the rubric that TEA will use to approve your system application is here as well. They will go through the application once it's submitted, and for each of those components, they'll be looking, is it limited or no readiness? Is it partial readiness or full readiness? The other tab is yellow. The yellow tab is the survey that we ask our 52 committee members to complete. And there's the results. We just asked four questions, and each of those questions were designed around the system components that districts need to decide and include that information in their application. So question one was about student growth. You can, if you like the bar charts, it's there. If you prefer the table with the, the numbers of responses, and then whenever it says other, those other responses are included here as well. And we got some really great feedback on those other responses. Question two, in addition to observation and student growth, you recall earlier in the presentation, the agency says districts may include additional factors. Pretty, almost overwhelmingly, teacher attendance was selected as an additional factor, and we, we know how critical that is, especially to our educationally disadvantaged students, our English learner students, to have the highest quality teacher in front of them every day. Then you'll just see the, the other possible additional factors listed, and we even had 11 more responses about other ideas to consider. The third question is really, we, we needed to flesh out what groups of certified teachers should be included in Tyler's local designation system. That is one feature that's important here. The teacher incentive allotment is only designated for certified teachers. And so we get, so in the survey, we built just some teacher groups, Level 4 teachers, Level 3, Level 2, and Level 1. Those are just descriptions of which groups of certified teachers should be included in the local designation system. You'll see nearly everybody selected Level 4 teachers. Those are teachers with a STAR tested area. And then Level 3 teachers, those are core content teachers that, they teach STAR-tested subjects, but they don't have a growth measure. It's your science teachers, your social studies teachers, your grade-three teachers, biology, US history. They just don't have a growth measure included. Level 2, core content area teachers that do not have STAR testing attached, and then Level 1 is other teachers, including elective teachers. Just getting people to think about the categories because we, the district has to develop a spending plan as well. And here we had 11 other responses to the teacher category questions. And then House Bill 3, since it does require spending at least 90% of those funds awarded to the teacher compensation on that campus where the teachers work, we just set up some different spending scenarios to get people thinking about what option do they think best for spending? And I, I won't belabor that, but we gave option one, just short and sweet, only designated teachers get compensation. Spending option two, everybody gets equal compensation. Option three, this is a tiered compensation, back to those level teachers, a Level 4. An example, a Level 4 might get 40% of the funds, Level 3, 30%, 2, 20%, 1, 10%. Spending option four, your designated teachers could receive 90% of the base, and then everybody else gets some type of compensation based on campus growth. Again, nothing necessarily written in stone here, but getting people to realize there are different spending options, and the district must make a decision as to how you want to spend those dollars, and we include it in the system application to the agency. And I'll stop there in case you have other questions.
I have a question on the previous group. So, if I am an AP Physics teacher in high school, that's not a STAR-tested grade, so where would I fall? I'm not a Level 4 teacher, I'm a Level 2 teacher, where would I fall on that?
Yeah, you said AP Physics?
Just random, just a non-STAR, but an advanced subject that we want to have a great teacher in.
Well, right now, again, for this survey, that would be a Level 2 because, of course, physics is a core content subject. It does not include STAR testing.
But remember, we do, it'd be a Level 2, but we also provide incentivization for how many AP 3s they get and above. So there's ways that I think you could probably locally look at adjusting some of those as well, if, if you're going to try to do that. Yes?
Also, it would depend if that teacher has a designation on their certificate, because that's going to give them a digital. That would be for someone that doesn't have it, that would be more of a Level 2, but if they have the designation...
So if they are designated as exemplary...
They're going to earn more of that base pay.
Right. And, and again, this is a kind of a, a draft structure. If, if we want to include the CCMR, because that is what you're talking, you're referring to, that would be something we need to take a look at, because that is part of our accountability system and is a big chunk of our accountability system, not just in STAR-tested grades. Because if you think about some of our board goals and district goals, you talk about dual credit, and you talk about advanced placement, that's a big chunk. It's one of our, it's one of our three goals. Takes up a whole third of our, of our goal package here. So that would be something that we, we probably need to consider, Dee, as we go forward, Ms. Kano and Mr. Jones also, is, is how are we also attaching some of those that we, that is high stakes for us because, because that, that really does mean a lot to us. We want to get better with that. And dad gummit, we, we already do a great job at that. We, you know, 19 out of 26 AP exams that we provide, we outperform our public charter and private peers. Our teachers that teach those courses need to be rewarded for that.
Dr. Crawford, what would you say to a teacher who works on a Title I campus, who seems to feel like they would have a difficult time reaching that level? Now personally, I know there are great teachers on Title I campuses, but what would you say to someone who's giving their best and is trying to reach that level, but they haven't reached it and don't know if they can?
Student growth. I mean, it's not that we've plugged in here, it's a, it's the old tax system of thou shalt get 80% of your kids to pay. It is, it is linked to, are you growing those kids, those students that you get every year? It's not, it's not an apples-to-oranges comparison. It's an apples-to-apples. It's what you do with that kid the year that you give them. So that's been our standard philosophy for six years now, and if we still have some of that concern that it's not going to be fair because I'm at a Title I campus, I'm going to throw this back at you. If you're a good teacher, not at a Title I campus, I will run over to that Title I campus because if I can get my kids to grow and those kids need me the most, that's where I can go to become that master teacher designation. So I, I think that's kind of the philosophy that we've talked about this entire, at least for six years now, that, that zip code does not determine the quality of teacher that you get or performance.
And we, and we say it to the teachers just like that?
Absolutely.
That's great.
And it depends, too, you know, the system will be on their evaluation, too, like how well they're performing based on what the principal sees, and that's what Texas Tech will evaluate, that we are grading all of our teachers the same in terms of evaluation. And then, and then the next part is student growth, sorry.
And if I could just add one more piece in that Live Binder for you, if you, if you're interested, there is the student growth standards. These are from TEA. Again, they published them last week. Is for a recognized teacher, 55% of students meet or exceed growth, exemplary 60%, master 70%, and then there's, if you're, you're interested in the formula, there's the formula. And then for the observation standard, again, they released these last week. It, I'm going to scroll to the very bottom. There's your observation performance descriptors, and the agency has, has clarified master, exemplary, and recognized expectations. So we do have a guide from TEA as to those designations for recognized exemplary and how.
Thank you.
Reverend Mason, just, just to kind of refresh the board, all of our campuses are designated Title I now. So I think what we're talking about is a collection of Title, Title I students, a collection of more Title I students and maybe some of our campuses, the high-risk load campuses is what you're talking about. And we know what, which ones those are, but some of them are performing admirably, and if we would have already been in this, participating with this, if this is something they might have put out in the 84th or 85th Legislature, or 83rd, we would have, we would have had some teachers that were starting to collect some pretty good salary now at your Douglas's, at your Ramys, at your Orr's, places where we, we, we've recovered these campuses. So I think this is an equity changer, our participation in this. There's no doubt about it, that you're going to get good quality teachers that you already have in the district. See exactly what I just stated, this is an opportunity for me to grab that designation because there's so much growth to be had. And then you're also going to start getting people to come to the profession that we need so, so desperately because they can make a good salary and teach at any one of our campuses.
Does anybody have any other questions, or is there any more of this presentation that, to do, or?
Anything for Dee before we let her go? And we've got Mr. Kano, or Mr. Kano, Mrs., Ms. Kano and Mr. Jones, that we can have some further conversation once we let our consultant off the hook. Are you in Austin today, Dee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, stay healthy.
We're sheltering in place still.
Yes, you are. Anything else for Ms. Carney?
This is one question. So if we were to hire, say, out of a Cohort A or B district, a teacher there that already has been designated as a master teacher, for example, and we hire them before our full program is up and running, they could still get that money, right?
Yeah, once you're designated as a... Yeah, once you're designated as a master teacher or a recognized teacher, you get that for five years. They follow you around, whether they follow you to Tyler, or you go to Sudan, or you go to Luter's Avoca, you're going to get that, you're going to get that money that follows you around. Y'all know where that is? You know where Luter's Avoca is?
I know where Sudan is. That's Sudan, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, that's, that's something that, that, you know, it's still pretty neat. I mean, you know, somebody could take advantage of that. Gets a master designation in Roscoe Collegiate ISD, y'all know where that is? Because I think they're part of Cohort 1, because they've already been doing some of these things, where every kid gets a, an associate's degree, every kid. And of course, they've got 200 kids in high school, I think, or maybe 100. But anyways, they could get that designation there, and they come work for us in Tyler ISD, and still get that, you know, by the time this really gets going, that $25,000 to $30,000 above that, plus our differentiation on the pay scale. So Reverend Mason, I think there might be some reversal of that, to where you get some of these rural teachers designated master, and, and then wind up flipping and coming to maybe some more metropolitan or contemporary areas. But Dee, I am, it is correct, though, that as far as the tiers go, that designation follows them, but they just get slid into pretty much what the state says we can pay out versus those tiers. Is that correct?
Well, that is correct. And remember, the, the tiers will be recalculated every year. So Tier 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, those payouts are recalculated every year. If next year you receive a teacher who has that master designation, even before you have your Tyler ISD system approved, those dollars will follow that teacher to whatever campus that she is, she, he is assigned.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, you know, because of how long we're having to take on the study of the validity and the reliability, I can see where TEA wants this to be fairly airtight as we go into this, because you do have some of the potential for the recalibration every year on the, on the, where the tiers are in those five, you know, where the students are in those five tiers. Tier 5 being, you know, the poorest of our, of our economically challenged kids, and one being, you know, not challenged for the most part. So I, I think that time is good for them, and good for us, maybe, but at the same time, it, it's, it's on us, and it's going to be, you know, I hope, the hope that y'all are interested in this, because I do think it's going to be an opportunity for us to, to, to do some pretty cool things, so.
So just from recruiting, so if I'm a teacher, master teacher, in a Tier 1 campus, and I get a huge pay bump if I go to a Tier 5 campus, right?
That, that's the theory. Absolutely.
So if we have Tier 5 campuses, currently no master certified teachers, we have a world-class program yet. Is there a way for us to recruit already designated master or exemplary teachers to come to our Tier 5 schools immediately before we did this program on its own?
Yeah, Dee, I think that's a good question. Someone gets a master teacher identification in District A if they come to District B and they're, and they're, and they're at a Tier 1 campus. But we've got a, where 95% of our kids are probably Tier 5, if they come from that Tier 1 campus to Tier 5 campus, and we're not participating in the program yet, the state's still going to flow that money to us for that teacher, is that correct?
That is correct. And, and Dr. Crawford, if I could just add to that thought as well, you remember that National Board Certified teachers are automatically receive that recognized designation. So as you're thinking about this idea of how do we recruit already identified and designated teachers, you may want to add that to your recruitment list as well, because those National Board Certified teachers will walk into being a recognized designation.
I can't remember the data that was presented at the service center on how many National Board Certified teachers there already are in the state. There's not very many, it's a handful, 200 or so, I believe.
Yeah, there's not very many, because it's a, it is a lot of work to become National Board recognized, and until this particular incentive allotment, there was very little financial reward for teachers to go after that certification.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else for Ms. Carney? If not, Ms. Carney, thank you so much. You always give such a pleasant and poised and thorough presentation, and we really do appreciate your contributions here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your work. Thank you, Dr. Crawford, Ms. Cano, and Mr. Jones. I'll talk to you again soon.
Thank you, Dee.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. Do we have anything else? Does any other board members have anything else for Ms. Cano or Mr. Jones? Pretty, pretty thorough and informative presentation there, and I think it gives us plenty to chew on and digest, so.
We've got more coming at you as well. We've got to firm up some stuff in here, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think we've got some more communiques going out with the group?
Such as the survey, and some from that, and then moving on down the road to keeping track with timelines, because as TEA said, those timelines before I see, they're still at like-
Yeah, this little thing we're going through right now-
And next up is the application.
Hold on just a minute. Even though I'm going off the board, I see the importance of your board members having the information, even though it's going out to your groups, so they can be knowledgeable as well of all that's going on. Even though we have board representation, I think it's good for all board members to know.
Now that you have access to the live binder, that will stay there, and you will be able, you'll be, it'll be kept up as we move on, it will be uploaded to that live binder, and you can get the agenda ahead of time, so you'll know when the, what's going on with the, the at-large group. So keep that link in that slide, and we will keep you updated.
And I do believe Dr. Crawford just emailed that to us, that link, so you'll be able to get in there. There's a lot of information in there, so. And we've only just begun as well.
Yeah, absolutely right. There's a lot of training that has to go along with this, because that's critical for the inner rate of reliability, because we can't have everybody being designated as recognized and exemplary on campuses and kids not performing. If, especially for teachers that might only have, well, the majority of their, their pie that you saw on the chart is coming from the T-Test observations. So we, we've got to make sure that everything is done across the board to be valid and reliable as we move forward.
Okay. We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we do have about five action items here, and most of them are, I think, worthy of at least a little bit of discussion or introduction from Dr. Crawford. And just to, just to really kind of run, run down A and, and, well, just, just all of them, just a quick little snippet on it, if you don't mind, Dr. Crawford.
Absolutely. The first item, before you consider it and take possible action, is our, is an amendment and a ratification with Mentoring Alliance. MA is serving as a side-by-side, I want to call them volunteer army, because they are receiving some compensation, but, you know, Rose City Summer Camps is what we pretty much dedicated our, a lot of attention to budgetarily before this crisis. We realize, Mentoring Alliance realizes that being able to have a robust Rose City program is in jeopardy, and so we wanted to go ahead and engage them to start doing some things for us, to be able to have some connection with our community, almost like additional counselors, to where they're actually helping us with food delivery, curriculum delivery, counseling of our, of our students and our families that are, that they're identifying that are having issues. Boys and Girls Club, some of the kids that they've had relationships with through, through Boys and Girls Club, trying to maintain those as we go forward as well. And then the summer, not giving up completely on Rose City Summer Camps, but we know that's going to have to be an amended program. I've already talked to Kevin East and said that we're not going to dedicate any more budgetary allowances in regard to that. That's why we're bringing this amendment now, so we can get started on some of the things now, and then have that scoped down, Boys and City, or Rose City Summer Camps, if we can actually open up our campuses and serve, serve the community per county, stay-at-home orders, statewide orders, things like that. The other thing on that is, is that, that we may not use all four sites if we do Rose City, but I've told him that Boulter's non-negotiable. But if we do have Rose City this year, that's priority number one for the school system, since that, that is pretty much the pocket of high-risk loads that we do have that are currently not being able to go to school every day. So, so I think it's going to happen. If we, if we can't energize all four, it looks like Hubbard may, may not make the cut as we go forward, depending upon enrollment, depending upon him being able to hire staff, so we can at least get to three, which would be Three Lakes, Moore, and Boulter, Boulter being the priority on that, and then crank back up in future years, adding Hubbard to that list. So that's what you've got in front of you, is kind of a ratification of just Rose City Summer Camps, to actually making it more of a broader, service-minded support group that, that's already been doing some work for us now.
Okay. Are these additional funds, or is this a shift of funds? And is, are these funds coming, if they're additional, coming out of fund balance?
Yeah, we had a debate about that, since we already approved the agreement with Mentoring Alliance, that we felt like we could go ahead and move into, just keep, continue to do it, but we want to put it in front of the board, because the, that, those funds were pretty much designated for Rose City Summer Camps.
Okay.
But understanding that we've got some, you know, the Boys and Girls Club gets strictly pretty much all of their operational funding from after-school tuition. That's nowhere right now. You know, a lot of these kiddos are staying at home now, but still need some of the great things that happen with Boys and Girls Club. So we're just, we're just ratifying it. That's what we're asking the board to consider, is just a ratification of where we're using those dollars. Same organization, but just maybe in a little different, a little different way than just Rose City Summer Camps.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, or is everybody pretty clear on that now? I just wanted to make, make sure we clarified that it was kind of a shift in, in funds.
It's not additional funds, it's a shifting of purpose-
Okay.
-or function of those funds.
I have a question. What documentation will be kept to show that they are reaching out? It says, "Providing a touch point of communication with families to allow access and meet the needs of specific hardship families are facing." Is this telephone? Is this a computer? Is this?
Well, right now, it is electronic communication, variety of those, along with some of the food distribution and curriculum distribution that we have going on as they go side to side. They are able to maybe communicate from a distance with some of those individuals. As we think going through the summer, and as we start alleviating some of these restrictions, these stay-at-home restrictions, yeah, you can actually maybe go to a, have a 12-foot conversation with kids, and just sit down in the yard with them, just say, hey, how are things going? I mean, it, we are, we do have rosters, we do know where, where they're going with our, with these initiatives, but as far as the one-to-one interactions, sitting home, sitting at home on a couch with someone, that's not occurring because of some of the, because of the thing that we're having to deal with right now. But we do have them identified on who we're reaching out to.
Just make one comment, that in light of how much instructional time we're losing, summer school would come to more and more this year. And so although I understand the need to shift funding to how the needs are currently being met, to the extent that there are funds that we are not spending in the same way that we're not spending, those would seem to be prioritized towards how, however, whatever strategies you come up with to minimize summer learning loss in light of a big chunk of our instructional time.
Yeah. I mean, that is, that is an issue, and I think Rose City Summer Camp, if we were able to energize that, can help us. But having a robust district-wide summer school, we've been modeling that out. If you can't make it compulsory, I don't know how you can, because I've got some debate even on my own cabinet about that. And I'm trying to be contrarian, and I sway one way or the other. We've got to get commitment for that to be effective. We, we know from whenever Mentoring Alliance comes up here and presents, how many weeks out of the summer it takes to, to not slide, what the participation has to be on that. So the kids that go, I think eight out of the 10 weeks are really, you know, staying online and not sliding, but the ones anything below that, that are inconsistent and not going, it's a kind of a scatter shot. I think the best thing that we can talk about is when we come back to school, and having a very prescriptive plan the first month of school. In other words, let's just say we come back August 3rd. We haven't talked about that yet. That's going to be an April 20th conversation. If you come back during that time, then maybe before Labor Day, that, that month is when we really hit, trying to figure out and have a good plan in place on that remediation, very prescriptive, and we don't introduce anything new until after Labor Day. That's kind of the going theory amongst all school systems in the state right now. There's some that are saying they're going to do summer school come heck or high water. I'm trying to figure that out for us, of reaching the 9,000 students that we probably think need to get into summer school, and how we make that compulsory. Because even with our distance learning program we have right now, we don't have full participation. We do not. And we don't have full contact. That's another thing that's driving me crazy, is this has been publicized, published in the paper, it's been put online. Your neighbors know that this is going on, that we have an opportunity to, that we've been providing Chromebooks, curriculum packets, that we've been feeding people, and we have yet to make contact with some students. And it is to no fault of the school system, because we've got logs of email and phone, and even mailouts, that we're getting return letters, and we, and they haven't contacted us. So we're still working hard on that.
What's the ballpark percentage is on?
I, I think Lee's, I can tell you high school, because it's fresh from a conversation I had, but it's less than 10% at Lee's. So I, I got to think that it's probably a little bit higher at some of our other campuses, but that is a challenge for us right now. And I cannot say that it's not because we're not busting our hump to try to get it out there. We need the other side of this to engage us to. If, if you haven't been, if, if you're watching this, if you have not been contacted by your campus, it's because we don't have a valid email or a phone number for you, and we're pulling everything out of our system on that. So please, I implore you to contact the campus, let us know what your needs are, food-wise and curriculum, because, you know, we've got teachers that are keeping logs, we've got principals that are keeping logs as well, and there are some students that we have not been able to get in contact with.
Okay, so let me ask this, so why can't some of the money, since we're proposing all this for Mentoring Alliance, why couldn't they be the ones who would help make contact?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we're using it for. Sure, absolutely. No doubt.
I would be remiss if I didn't express a concern, and I know you have, and the teachers and administrators in the district, of how this is going to impact the students continuing to be mastering in their learning. I know that's difficult, and I would hope that as Reverend Hager has said, that during the summer, at least maybe we can recap or at least serve more students, so that we can make sure we push forward, because we know that a lot of the money was for summer camps. So just, just a thought I have.
I've got a question or two, just so I can get straight in my mind. The money side of this, what, were we paying them anything for April and May prior to this agreement?
No.
Okay. So we weren't paying them anything. This is new- This is new money they'll be getting. We were planning to pay them stuff for money for June and July? That was in our budget before? This is new?
That's correct.
Is this in place of that money that we had?
Same same pot, the same dollars that we were planning on using for Rose City Summer Camps.
Yes.
That's correct.
And and right now, this is all that we're committing to is this, we're since we don't know whether we're going to have Rose City Summer Camps or not.
That's correct, and we will not exceed any other number than the 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 pre-agreed number that we had back in August when y'all adopted the budget.
Okay. And then a other question, are these, so we're still paying all of our employees right now, and I just want to make sure that financially, these aren't jobs that our employees that we're paying could do now. You know, if we're going to spend more money right now at a time when everybody's tightening their belt, I just want to make sure we don't have people sitting around doing nothing that could be doing some of these jobs.
Skill set is a is another part of this. I mean, you know, we've all, we've made the decision for the teachers to not be listed as essential staff that, you know, the the contact with the children and the students on a daily basis is being done online. And we're trying to utilize the Mentoring Alliance staff to do some of those more acute contacts with families outside of that. Because that personal interaction is is what is is missing. We're just we're using them as a, excuse me, additional support staff, others that are not physically coming into work on a daily basis, may not have the skill set to do what we're asking of the these Mentoring Alliance folks. As far as the relational stuff, I mean, you can, yeah, teachers have that, and that's something that's been missing. But I think to ask a, you know, a bus driver who we're also paying to replace what value of a relation from a relationship standpoint, I just don't think that's something that we're, I don't think that's a good use. So but yes, sir, we understand kind of the current climate we're in right now and would appreciate the opportunity to utilize them if the board agrees to that. If not, then we just won't do it.
Dr. Crawford, why are we paying this amount I see for full-time program staff payroll if they aren't really doing it? Are they doing a lot full-time or they? What are they doing?
Yeah, that's always been part of this of the plan on that is when we operate the Rose City Summer Camps, they do have coordination. That's been the case since we've started doing this, but even before I got here.
This part of after-school as well that we have been doing?
Yeah, that's been kind of part of the any agreement that we've had with MA. Absolutely, they've got program staff that coordinates and organizes different sites or different projects that they've got going on with us. It is not to exclusively compensate just the normal camp worker. There are some other administrative costs that are that have been built into this since I entered this job. I don't know if y'all didn't know that or not, but yes, ma'am, you do know, you do know that.
I just want to be sure our students are being served that we're paying for service.
I have never, during my time here, everything we've asked the Mentoring Alliance to do, they've done it.
They have, this is just a little different. We're in a different situation.
Yeah, and this is not a reflection, the fact that we're asking questions, it's not a reflection on that organization at all. It's just on the circumstances that we're in and our duty to taxpayers to make sure, you know, that that we're not wasting any money right now.
So Dr. Crawford, actually, what we're doing is just adjusting the payment schedule?
Correct. And some services, while they're not running a camp, some of the value that we do have in camp and the relationship pieces are, we're trying to attack it from that end as opposed to having a void. Because, you know, if we don't, again, this is y'all's decision. You're right, Mr. Bergfeld, you're 100% right on everything you just said. There's going to be a void there if we don't, and and that's okay, if that's the decision that we have to make or that y'all have to make. The recommendation is this, but yeah, that we're trying to do this from a different approach because of how uncertain June and July is right now. Nobody can predict that. And then we're just, hey, we're doing a heck of a job. Our staff has done a heck of a job in building this hybrid school system overnight because we've shut down our economy, we've shut down being able to be in the same building with each other. I mean, there's a lot of oddities to this. So we're trying to figure out other ways to 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 continue some of those personal interactions with staff that's willing to do that and and allowed to do that if if y'all approve that.
So Dr. Crawford, are you saying then that the Mentoring Alliance staff will be making some of these contacts that we haven't been able to make or go out to reach some of these students and families we have not heard from?
That is a strategy.
And this amount, the half million dollars, is that 100% of the remaining amount of this contract or is there monies left on the contract that would have only been used for Rose City Summer Camps?
Yeah, like like if if somehow we do have Rose City Summer Camps, will there have to be an additional influx that wasn't already in the contract?
No, Mr. East is very clear that this right here is to get a jump on some of those relationships, social, emotional things that we provide outside of just having camp or even the academic piece of this. This is that this, we're trying to get a head start on that, maintain some of that as we go forward because that's pretty dang valuable to us as well. But our plan is to not interject any more dollars than what's already been committed in the August budget for this. We're not going to, we're not, I'm not going to come back to you on that and ask. This is a a ratification of what we're we're going to do.
Okay. Is anybody satisfied?
If he didn't spend all of it, he didn't spend all of it. I mean, that's that's another thing is is we're going to keep an eye on that as well. It's not just going to write him a blank check on it.
So Dr. Crawford, they will, I assume, provide contact lists with you to let you know the families they have contacted and the results of the contact?
Absolutely.
Whether it's the Chromebooks or just academic enrichment?
Well, it's, I mean, we're we're about allocated on our Chromebooks. We don't have a lot of those in reserve.
Well, I mean, even your, you have packets that students receive.
Yeah, absolutely, learning materials that they're able to distribute, any food contacts or contact with people about be maybe getting, figuring out a way to get them and food in their hands, things like that, absolutely. Yeah, that's 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 a big piece of this. It's not just going willy-nilly, no, don't go do anything. But they've got to provide us documentation that they've had these things so that we can, they can, it's almost like an invoice and then we pay that out.
Well, I will go ahead and entertain a motion on item A.
I move that we approve the amended agreement with Mentoring Alliance for the rest of this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Say it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thanks for that, Dr. Crawford. It's just something I think we need a little clarification on. I do believe we have it. And, okay, moving on to, honestly, does anybody have anything else they want to pull? I would like to pull item C to discuss, but as far as B, D, and E, if anybody wants to pull any of those, they can. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve items B, D, and E, and then we can come back and talk about item C.
What?
Yep.
It's not a consent agenda out of just an abundance caution?
Okay.
Even if we go through it, let's just do them individually to be safe.
Uh, duly noted. Do I have an item, a motion to approve item B?
I move second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So can I go ahead and skip to D?
So move.
Hold on a second, we got our note taker back there. Secretary needs to say, say it again.
I think, who made the motion? Was it Reverend Hager?
Reverend Hager.
And then Andy gave the second? Aaron gave the second?
I did.
You gave the second? Okay. Sorry. Okay.
So would that be a consent? We don't need to skip C and just do C right?
We can, I mean, absolutely. I just didn't, it it might involve some just explanation and discussion, you know. But yeah, we can just do C, it's fine by me either way. You want to talk a little bit about C, Dr. Crawford, and the reasoning behind it and everything like that?
Yeah, and I was a little, table it if you want to, but there are some things that that may pop up. This is a little different than the crisis I had earlier in my career to where we were making, you know, hundreds of thousand-dollar decisions, million-dollar decisions without having to call a special called board meeting every time. And so we kind of formed this team of myself, the board president, and our CFO at that time to go through some of that. Of course, a lot of that was through costs, but there are some some policies that 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 might need some attention before we can get to a board meeting. And there are school systems, a lot of school systems have gone ahead and done this, granting the authority during the coronavirus issue, one being on the school calendar. While I have authority through policy to adjust the adopted school calendar, which I've already approved, you know, I think that those are things that that, you know, might need adjustment as we go forward without having to take full board vote. And so that would, you know, again, that would that would make me a little bit more comfortable to go ahead and execute those policies that are already in place if you do some of this stuff. So Mr. Washman and I have talked about it. It doesn't mean that I'm going to go make a decision to not keep y'all informed about it. I'll tell you where it kind of came a little bit of concern with us is on the 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 facilities for the childcare. And even though we've got that taken care of through local policy, and I'll let y'all know about that, I was kind of uneasy without y'all, you know, having some discussion about that. So I don't know what else is going to come up with COVID. And if y'all don't want to do this, if you want to table this for another time to where we need to come, that's fine with me too, but we wanted to get this in front of you and do it on the front end as opposed to to later in the time in case we need it. I don't know, the time, maybe John can, what are other school systems, for link doing this with for? You can go over there if you need to.
Good morning, Board. Thanks for having me. We've seen a number of similar resolutions. In fact, have prepared a number of these for other client districts that we're fortunate to work with. Each one is a little bit different. It's not quite a generic form. As Dr. Crawford pointed out here, one of the earliest concerns brought up was the potential need to use our facilities for alternate uses. Childcare for healthcare workers is one that came up early on. It also contains some other measures such as donation of equipment or supplies or lending of materials that we might have, for instance, at CTC, which might be of use in response. It's hard to know what those things are right now and whether they will be needed. I I would characterize this as sort of a flexibility resolution that allows Dr. Crawford to act faster than the 72 hours that he can gather a quorum of you to have a meeting to authorize certain actions. It is constrained to COVID-19 related issues. And one one thing that every district has expressed concern about is, well, we're still a board, we still run the district, and we have good CEOs like Dr. Crawford to do it. So this this isn't a blank check or absolute authority for Dr. Crawford to replace this board. It's an option for him to be able to respond more quickly and take actions, which perhaps you would then need to ratify at a future meeting. One of the provisions in the resolution is that at the first meeting following any contract, purchase, decision of this nature, partnership or MOU with another entity, he has to inform the board of that at the first time you meet following that event. And then I think finally, I'm trying to recall all that was in here. We talked about facilities and we talked about supplies. One of the areas that school lawyers like me have struggled, the statute on this is really written or was written in light of natural disaster, things like hurricanes, when schools were flooded and campuses had feet of water in them and districts needed to hire cleaning crews, tear out carpet, get construction people in, not unlike what Dr. Crawford faced in West when there was an unexpected explosion. The law covers that stuff very clearly. We may face some expenses here related to this virus pandemic that are sort of analogous. It's not clear whether the law exactly applies, you know, is is having to disinfect and sterilize a facility the same as having to repair a flooded facility? We don't know that yet. We think the law probably can be extended to those situations. So for example, when we start talking about bringing students back, if we need extra staff, extra supplies, our usual vendor list, say, doesn't have janitorial supplies adequate, we need to go to another supplier. This gives Dr. Crawford the ability to make those purchases without dragging the board here for a meeting in 72 hours' notice and so forth. That's a, go ahead.
Would we, I've never seen a meeting where we had to be dragged in to buy cleaning supplies.
Ordinarily, you wouldn't, and I I believe that our policy allows Dr. Crawford $50,000 of authority without approval. That very well may be enough.
And there, you know, we also are part of purchasing co-ops that there there's some things that I I don't see how I'm ever going to have to use this, but I got a little antsy on it when we started talking about the the facilities, because I'm already backed by policy on that, but I wanted to make sure that we had some, it was just kind of weird. And I could have said, I could have seen where one or one or two of y'all could have had some major concerns with that, rightfully so, but that would be something that I would do. I don't anticipate this being large capital expenditures because of COVID. But again, I I think this is some of the things.
What would you do that you don't have the authority to do right now by policy? That what are we talking about here? Because we're not talking about, you know, cleaning supplies and here's, if you want to let a school, someone use a school, I mean, people use our schools all the time and the board doesn't approve it. So tell me what we're talking about.
I I think you hit it. At the risk of sounding like a doomsday example, let's say that tomorrow, Kristus and UT Health call us and they say, you know, we've been hit by 10,000 cases and we need childcare tomorrow. One thing Dr. Crawford ordinarily doesn't have day-to-day authority to do would be to sign an MOU with local hospitals, with TJC or another operator of childcare services. The district is not equipped or licensed to do some of that. We would have to partner with someone like TJC to bring in the workers who are licensed by the state to to run a childcare. And, you know, again, all things well within the board's purview. If we get the call that that has to happen tomorrow, I legally, I don't believe that COVID-19 is anymore an emergency. We've known about it for weeks. We're doing our best to plan for things that aren't easy to plan for. It's the type of action that perhaps Dr. Crawford would need to act now and the board would need to ratify in three days or a week or when it next meets. An example.
So to answer Mr. Bergfeld's question then, as it relates to facilities, only for facility use outside of what our normal policy covers, which is kind of supplementary use, would this need to be invoked? So if I wanted to rent a gym, there's a fee for that, I can pay that, so it becomes open. What we're talking about here is something significantly different, taking over a whole facility, signing an MOU with some sort of operator for services to be on the body.
I I think the the latter is the bigger part. The the facility part, I'm fairly comfortable with. You're right, we've got good guidelines and policy for that. Dr. Crawford has authority to approve or disapprove how that's used. The bigger issue is executing the contracts or the MOUs, however we're going to characterize those agreements with, whether it's the local healthcare providers, whether it's operators for the daycare, there may be supporting vendors that are necessary. There there are many issues that would go with something like that. Feeding the kids, do we use our workers? Do we have to use somebody? You know, many issues that honestly are hard to foresee, but it's that contract signing ability, as the board knows, when there's an MOU with TJC, the board president signs it following action by the board. That's different than renting the gym.
Okay, so the other question then is by policy for donations. That's not something we typically do a lot of, but if we had DVD in the CTC, if we had food that we purchased that we now don't think at some point don't believe we'll be able to use before it expires, how does donation awarding work right now under policy? And how does this obviously loses that? And how does, this obviously loses that against the superintendent. I just don't know what our current donation policy is.
Well, the, well, the, so there's an AG opinion that's specifically tied to the current challenge that we're in. That it's just an AG opinion. It doesn't, you know, it's an opinion. And so that is one of the deals of quote-unquote gifting of public funds. We've already bought these with taxpayer dollars and we're shifting these over to maybe another entity, which, you know, we, we've done some work already with fire and EMS and police. But you're, now you're talking about what does it look like if it goes to Christus or something private? Again, the AG has said that in a, in a public crisis like we're in, that it's acceptable. But that is, that does make me a little nervous. I mean, we can see where that makes me a little nervous on that, just like I said with the facilities and that. Look, we're having a good conversation about this. If y'all think, y'all got confidence in me to do the job, I'm fine with that. And we can just not act on this, but it's not something I have to have. It's something I brought before y'all to consider if you wanted to.
So I'm not sure, again, by policy, are you currently empowered to donate? So I know you're empowered to spend up to 50. Could you donate up to 50,000?
I, I'm not certain actually that we have a policy that speaks directly. We're, we're usually thankfully more in the business of receiving donations than making them. And we have to be cautious with donations, like Dr. Crawford alluded. We, we've got to avoid anything that could be characterized as an unconstitutional gift to public funds. However, there is an opinion out there that basically says as long as a public entity gets something for whatever it puts in, whether that's equipment, services, you know, in this case, it might be PPE. It might be masks that are donated and discarded when used. It might be equipment that's used and eventually returned. While it's not crystal clear in the law, the reading between the lines, the implication is that even more nebulous gain for the district, things like increased public health, it protects students, it protects our community, it lessens spread, it flattens the curve, as everybody's been saying, that that might be adequate return for deploying some of our resources for unusual uses.
So what it looks like is we're being proactive, we're giving you something to protect you in doing the job that needs to be done. Us, right, Board, and everyone.
We wouldn't be doing this. We wouldn't be just
Right.
showing up saying, hey, we're gonna donate a bunch of PPE to you guys when things are, are normal. And I, so I, yeah, I'm a little nervous about some of the things.
I can understand that.
But I do think that since y'all are, you know, responsible for the, for the budget of this stuff and, and, and we've already procured it, we've got it in storage, that yeah, I think it's all of us that are, we're talking about public funds and whether or not we want to provide that. If y'all want to have a board meeting every 72 hours to, to do that, that's fine too. Again, I mean, I just, but I think that's one reason we got this in front of us, because this is a very abnormal
Right.
situation. And if we've got some of these items that are needed or a facility is needed, then that is something that makes it a whole lot easier to, to maybe go forward with.
I, I think I would just add that, at least in my opinion and in discussions with the administration, this was designed with both proactivity but also reactivity. I don't think we're gonna go looking for places to give things away. This is when the hospital calls, when the fire and police departments call.
Food bank.
How can we assist? This isn't, you know, we're heading out with trucks to give stuff away.
Yeah, that's been pretty, that's kind of been the way it's been. I'm glad, I'm glad I'm not on the executive team that's making, that's having to deal with this. They're letting me just run the school system and then whenever they have an idea that might, they may call us. Anyways.
Well, and I will say that, you know, six years in, there's a lot of trust that's been built up. And I don't think, in, in my opinion, that every board has a relationship with their superintendent where they can trust them to act in, in this way. But I do think we have that sort of relationship and trust. And anyway, if I don't have any other comments on this, I'll go ahead and just entertain a motion on item C.
I've got one more comment.
Sure.
My only reservation is just adding to hysteria that doesn't exist yet. It may, it may not. We don't have a need for all of this stuff right now. So, you know, I trust Marty to make this, these decisions. And this is a serious issue or it has potential to be a serious issue, but it has the potential to not be an issue here. And so, you know, I just think if, it's real easy to just go, oh, yes, we've got to, you know, sign off authority to him. And because it's all, you know, everything's, you know, going to chaos. It's not. And, you know, we want to be prepared if things, you know, go a certain direction and, and that's it. But I don't think to the public and to our, you know, people that are gonna read about this, this is not, you know, some knee-jerk reaction that we're panicked over. This is just, you know.
I think it's a good point, and I think the hope is you never have to even consider using it, you know. And it's only applies to this, these certain situations where we're not covered and we need to act quick. And the hope is we'll never have to ask you to use it, but in the case that something, God forbid, did require it, then we're covered.
I think it's caused us to be ready, be prepared. We had, no one expected this. And I think this has caused all organizations in the United States of America and the powers that be to know that we need to be better prepared.
One more question. So the resolution is currently drafted, expires at the end of the 2021 school year or until rescinded by the board of trustees? Why the end of next school year and not necessarily the end of this school year?
I can, I can give two answers to that. One is the administration's request, again, in the name of flexibility. The other being that I don't think we have a clear picture of when the end of school is this year. You know, we have our district calendar. We're going week to week, month to month on what the governor and the local authorities are gonna let us do. We don't know about what summer looks like yet. Honestly, Dr. Crawford and I struggled to put an end date on this. I, I think that's open for discussion, but that, that's how we wound up where we are.
Yeah, the first one was May 4th, which, man, we have hope that that's gonna happen. May the 4th be with us. But it may not. The other thing is the end of school year, I mean, we, we know when the actual end date on our calendar is. The one reason I request, there's two reasons. One was the calendar for next year. And I'm sure we're, we're gonna have enough meetings between now and then to adjust it. The other thing is, is FEMA. I mean, they just now wrapped up a lot of stuff from West, which was seven years ago in regards to their interactions as far as documentation of things that are done. And we are going to qualify for some reimbursements, no doubt about that. So I don't know if that matters or not, if y'all want to make it to this school year or if y'all want to table it and we'll come back and call an emergency meeting. I'm okay with that too. I don't want this to be a big distraction for y'all or me. We've been, heck, we haven't been panicked. We've identified 900 people of our, of our 2,600 as essential staff. We've been working in a fairly normal fashion, observing social distancing when we can. So I, hey, I'm not, I'm not dying on that hill. If y'all, whatever y'all need to do, do what you need to do. You've got faith in me. I appreciate that. I've got faith in y'all. If we need to table this because we're gonna be a little bit contrarian in other places, then let's do it. I'm okay with that. Okay, and if you need to change the date on it too, I mean, I, I think that would be something that a, a board motion could be to accept the amendment or the, the resolution with the understanding that expires at the end of the school year, May the 4th, whatever y'all want to do.
One last question, so unclearly. Currently, do you or do you not by policy have the authority to donate school?
It's, I'm giving you a vague answer because it's, it's pretty vague there. There's the, the fine line between if you, again, we're in a normal situation, no. But in an abnormal situation
We're in.
that we're in right now, then the AG, the Attorney General of the State of Texas has a, a, an opinion out there that says that that's appropriate. So I wouldn't, we wouldn't be considering this in a normal situation. This has been an abnormal situation that the AG says we are covered on that, but is there things specific in policy that I'm aware of? No. I don't think there's a thou shall not, but I don't think there's a thou shall.
Thou shalt not is in the state constitution.
Okay.
But I think our local policy does not address the making of donations, only the receiving of donations.
Just seems, seems a long way out to say the end of school year 21 to abandon the current policy that we are operating under.
You want to offer amendment? I mean, you amended?
I mean, it, I mean, surely by, you know, mid-July, we ought to know whether this thing is, we need to extend it out at that point or, or it expires on its own. I'd feel more comfortable with that since we are changing policy here.
Maybe a date of July 31st or something like that?
Or August 1st.
Yeah.
What?
Or that last paragraph on here, it says, or until rescinded by the Board of Trustees, whichever occurs earliest. We could.
Then we'd have to put it on the agenda.
That's true. That's true.
You know, I'd rather put it on the agenda to extend it if, if we need it or let it expire.
Well, shorten the term and somebody can, when we make the motion, move to accept it with the amendment of the date being July 31st.
Okay, let's see here. I move that we approve Roman numeral 5C with the amendment that the the end date would be July 31st.
Of the year 2020.
2020.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Amended motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Right.
I hope it expires. Let's just make it that way.
Yeah, but it's good, good work and good conversation. And, okay, we'll move on to item D, which is the designation of records, management and public officer, public information officer.
Yeah, this is actually required by policy and by statute. You know, Carolyn Roundtree, who served in that position, no longer with us. And so we've, Yolanda Moore is the actual person that we have chosen for that. She's got to go through a variety of, of trainings and requirements as far as open meetings at and public information requests and open records. It's got to come before y'all to have that identification. This is somebody different than the Executive Director of Communications, even though some of that information and PIR gets kind of loosely thrown around, or PIO gets loosely thrown around as communications directors. That is not the case.
She's presently an employee here in our school district.
Yes. She did, she did work in Tasha Bjork's shop in accounting. She is a paralegal and does have experience and did meet all the job qualifications for that.
Okay. Do I have my motion on item D or any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item E, which is the boundary changes for Bell and Pete. Now that we're going to dual language and Spanish immersion there over at Birdwell.
Yeah, the, what's in front of you is kind of the physical descriptions along with the map of what the, that attendance zone will look like now that we're going to a magnet program at Burl, or excuse me, Birdwell. Burl. Birdwell for Spanish immersion. We've had that discussion February maybe or March? Probably February, I believe. Mm-hmm. Excited about it.
Just one question. The initial, another going through an application process, is the sense still that there should be enough participation to warrant this boundary change?
Yeah, that one's actually a little, a little bit, both, both of our K-8 academies that are, that are magnet are having a challenge with this right now. So part of the immersion way to qualify for that is actual, an actual test, oral test. And so we're, we're working our way through that right now. Obviously, we can't do anything face-to-face, just like we can't do anything face-to-face at Caldwell right now. So if we've got to extend this in the summer to do more of that in-person testing, we possibly can if things get opened up. But yes, we feel like we have enough students to, to populate that campus that are interested. But again, there's some challenges that go along with that right now because of the current situation we're in.
Dr. Crawford, does this affect more of the students who presently live in maybe Bell, uh, Birdwell school down, zone than it does Pete's school zone?
No, it's a pretty, I think it's like within four or five kids on the amount, on the split. You know, we tried to use big, stay with our, our strategy on redrawing boundaries, of staying with big streets. And so Sunnybrook is a, was, you know, a pretty good thoroughfare right through there that connects into Earl Campbell. So, you know, you're looking at north, south, or maybe northeast, southwest split right there. And whenever we did that, it pretty much lined up with the amount of kids, but equally distributed between both Pete and or, Pete and Bell.
Okay, any questions or comments on, on this item?
Move to approve boundary changes for Pete and Bell.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We are now going to move into executive session. And there will be action to follow, Marty? Or is there any action to follow executive session today?
No, sir.
Okay, with no action to follow. Okay, we will now move into executive session.